In opening the meeting, we acknowledge the Bangdala people, the traditional owners of the land on which we meet tonight, and pay our respects to the elders, past, present and emerging, and extend that respect to other Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people who may be present tonight. In delivering our oath to Waila, we, the Waila City Council members, commit to serving the community of which we are a part, and will work together diligently and collaboratively to create a prosperous future in which we can all share. In delivering our obituary notices for those who wish to make stand, and then the traditional moment silence afterwards in respect. Rosemary Ryan, Victoria Moody, David Hartwell, Ivan Banovic, Glenda Carpenter, Thomas Kogus, Thomas Jeffries, Heather Carpenter, Percy Prenzel, Cheryl Thomas, Barbara Medland, Joseph Eads, Raylene Bryan, Brian Cock, Campbell Miller, and to add to those, we have had advice on Saturday that a former elected member, Kerry Lavery, passed away. Thank you. Item four, our attendance record, we have apologies from councillor Knox, deputy mayor Pond, and I'm just advised that councillor Campbell is on her way. We have no leave of absence. Item five, council member and executive declarations, 5.1, conflicts of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest they need to declare? No conflict of interest, thank you. Gifts and benefits, 5.2, does anybody have anything to declare? If not, I have a declaration that I was invited as mayor along with my wife and accepted two tickets to the Australian Ballet recently. No further gifts or benefits? Thank you. Item six, the minutes of the previous meeting, 6.1, confirmation of the minutes of the previous ordinary council meeting held on Monday 17th of July. Would somebody care to move the recommendation? Councillor Westman moved, councillor English seconded. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against Kerry, thank you. Item seven, matters adjourned or laid on the table, we have nil. Eight, deputations, we have nil. Nine, petitions, we have nil. Public question time, we have two questions. 10.1, resident Mr A. Williams posed the question under the heading of Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. His question, councillors may be aware that Adelaide City Council recently voted in support of calling on the federal government to sign the treaty on the prohibi- prohibition, thank you, haven't even had water, of nuclear weapons. Many other councils have done likewise, including Port Augusta Council. Can Waila Council show its support by doing the same? The answer, the question under reference relates to a project of the International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons, ICANN. The ICANN campaign titled Abolish Nuclear Weapons: Cities Appeal is a global call from cities and towns in support of the United Nations Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. More than 40 councils within Australia have endorsed the appeal, including Adelaide City Council, Port Adelaide Enfield Council, Prospect City Council, West Torrens and Mount Barker. In June 2021, the Australian Local Government Association passed a motion declaring the National General Assembly calls on the Australian Government to sign and ratify the treaty on the prohibition of nuclear weapons. If Waila Council wishes to support the treaty on the prohibition of nuclear weapons, a report can be submitted to a future meeting of council endorsing the same. Second question from Mrs Vorend, a resident, on council waste management programme, general recycling, her question, I have heard rumours recently that the content of our yellow recycling bins here in Waila is being placed into landfill along with general waste. Can you please clarify that the Waila City Council's current waste management contractor is recycling yellow bin contents appropriately? The answer, the content of the curbside yellow recycling bins in Waila is not ending up in landfill along with general waste. The recycling waste collected from the yellow bins is transported to the Waila Veolia Transfer Station, where it is temporarily stockpiled before being sent to the North Adelaide Waste Management Authority. At the authority, the recyclable materials are sorted according to their types, contaminants are removed, and the clean materials are sent for recycling. Waila City Council is committed to reduce landfilling and improving resource recovery. Curbside collected recycling materials are not ending up in landfills, as the council aims to recycle as much waste as possible. However, it is important to note that all general waste bin materials do end up in the landfill, which incurs transport and landfill levy costs. Additionally, the waste collected from curbside green bins is directly transported to the Peet Soil Waila site for composting. This ensures that green waste is also managed sustainably. This process demonstrates the council's commitment to effective recycling and waste management. The community's efforts in separating waste is crucial and contributes significantly to reducing environmental and financial impacts. Item 11, council members' reports, you have them being scrolled on the screen there. I'll give elected members a moment if there is anything they wish to elaborate on. Otherwise, another very busy period. Thank you, everyone. Item 14, reports, council officers, 14.1, office of the chief executive, 14.1.1, the CEO's action report. You have that report in front of you, I'll take it as read, and any questions or comments to the CEO. Councillor Border.
Just an observation, a lot of virtual meetings noted there, any particular reason? Just seems to be an influx, more so than the last couple of years.
Okay. So, I've recorded whether they've been attending the meetings virtually or in person, because it actually works both ways. You'll see some of the meetings were actually Adelaide-based meetings that I attended virtually, and some were Waila-based meetings that I attended from Adelaide. So, in the past, I haven't recorded whether they've been in person or virtual, but I thought it's important for elected members to know that quite often I'll actually have to be in two places at once. So, quite often, I'll actually need to do virtual meetings to be able to attend meetings that I would otherwise not be able to attend.
You're back online, aren't you?
Yeah.
Another quick question.
Yes, councillor.
There's some, sorry, the summary of the hydrogen conferences, the report, a lot of it seemed to be cut and paste from the Annetteure, but I think further to what councillor Knox has asked for in the past, and what I'd be personally very interested in, is when members of the administration or council members attend those sorts of events, especially these ones, I would actually love to hear the insights. So, not just the content of what was covered in the presentation, which is obviously large and bulky, and we're actually getting the presentation, which is great, but a succinct snapshot, which comes through your lens or the administration's lens, I'd be very interested to hear what it is to help guide our decisions for future.
Thank you, councillor.
Yeah, through the mayor. So, a couple of conferences that I've attended are actually on tonight's agenda. So, when we get to those items, I'm happy to provide some additional personal observations and commentary in relation to those items.
Any further questions?
I do have a couple of updates.
Yes, CEO.
Through the mayor, just in addition to the written report, I wanted to provide council with two updates. One is in relation to the necessary work at the Waila airport to accommodate the larger Q400 planes, following Qantas's announcements a few weeks ago that they're going to be transitioning their fleet from Q300s to Q400s. Councillors received a briefing note from the administration at the time that identified some of the facts and figures to give you a bit of an understanding of what the potential ramifications from that change in fleet might present for our airport. Since that time, as recently as last week, we had a pavement expert actually come and did an assessment of our runway. And late last week, we received a draft report from that pavement expert, and the director of corporate services and myself will be meeting with that pavement expert tomorrow. The short version is that the assessment is being good in that some of our fears that we may need to do a full reconstruction of the runway and potentially also need to extend the runway is not likely to occur. We have got confirmation that our runway is sufficiently long enough, so we do not need to extend it for the Q400s. If we wanted to do something other than a Q400, for example, an Embraer 190, we would certainly need to extend the runway, but for the Q400s, we don't need to extend the runway. And the assessment has confirmed that the Nashville overlay, reasonably thick overlay should be sufficient to provide the additional strength and shape required to the runway to bring it up to contemporary standards. So, at this point in time, we need to do some further work in terms of actual investigations and some detailed design work. So, we're still probably about two weeks, sorry, two months away from having our final scope of works and final cost estimates, but we believe that the potential cost of works is more likely to be somewhere in the order of about $15 billion, but we won't be able to confirm that for another couple of months. So, just wanted to give councillors that update that we will be, over the course of next week or two, looking to engage a couple of specialist contractors to do both those investigations and also the detailed design work necessary for us to progress that. The second update is that last week, you would have received a string of elected member workshops over coming weeks. At our last workshop, when we were talking about building stocks within our city, I confirm that there are a number of matters that council need to consider in the very near future. Those matters overlay or overlap each other. So, progressively, over coming weeks, we want to conduct a series of workshops that will work through those items, including a presentation from Planning and Land Use Services, which is the planning arm of the state government regarding the draft citywide master plan. The week following, we have been working with a consultant to work up a regional precinct and partnership application to go to the federal government, which has been jointly funded by the Office of Hydro Power SA. That particular application will look at development in our city, so clearly council needs to have a view in terms of what type of development should occur where. The week following, we have, as per our council's previous resolution, engaged Alenia. So, Ben Coop from Alenia will be coming to do a session with the councillors to look at what the vision or preferred development opportunities are for the former Darling Terrace civic building site, as well as the Ekblom site. So, all three of those matters all relate or interrelate with each other. And then, having had those series of workshops, Ben will return to the subject of community facility. So, just wanted to give councillors the update in terms of that series of workshops, which will kick off on Monday of next week, with a more detailed workshop to say, these are all the various components that council needs to work through, this is the timeframes and the structure for those discussions going forward. Happy to respond, any questions?
Thank you, CEO. Any questions? Thank you for that update. No further questions or comments, we have a recommendation there to receive and note the CEO's action report. Would somebody care to move that? Move councillor Border, seconded councillor Cloverke. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against Kerry, thank you. Item 14.1.2, the Eighth Australian Hydrogen Conference. Does anybody have any questions of the CEO? Otherwise, I will seek a mover. Sorry.
Yeah, I was going.
Sorry, councillor Border.
I was seconding councillor Tobbis.
Right, yeah, we're moving councillor, right. Move councillor Todd, seconded councillor Border, I'll put the motion, those in. Sorry.
Now that we've done that.
Right.
If I may, through the mayor, just returning to the question that was raised before and the insights from the conference, the report that has been provided, as councillor Border referenced previously, does include all the presentation material. It was a two-day conference, so it was a pretty heavy conference. The report does confirm that it provides a good insight into a number of the different, I was going to say, I won't use that word, the various organisations that are working on hydrogen, everything from a research, education, mobility, industry application, governance point of view, it was all-inclusive. It looked at the hydrogen developments across multiple jurisdictions or states around the country. So, it did provide a really good awareness of all of, not everything, but a lot of the work that's going into hydrogen. One of the key insights that was provided at that conference was the case study and presentation by H2 Green Steel, I think I've got the name right. So, they're a company that are currently doing a development in Bowen in Sweden. Couple of interesting facts about that development. One is that Bowen has a population of about 27,000, we've got 22,000, and on about 500 hectares of land, they're doing the full A to Z for green steel production, where on that site, they've got a desal plant, they've got an electrolyser, they've got a DRI plant, they've got a steelworks, and I think they've also got some port facilities to export. So, they've got a consortia that has been put together that touches every bit of technology in terms of the full process from the raw iron material at the front end through to green steel at the back end. The reason why that's interesting is that our council is about to transact with the state government on land that's in the order of about 700 hectares. So, I just said, they're doing the full monty on 500 hectares. So, and in that presentation, that the presenter said that that company has got a keen interest in looking at what's happening in Australia, and particularly in South Australia. And very shortly, we will be having a meeting with the state government in relation to that particular company and what their interests may be. That insight was interesting, because it then connects to the other subject on tonight's agenda, which I might just talk to briefly now as well, which is the state government's launching of its green steel strategy, and it's the expression of interest in terms of green ore, green steel. It's really interesting to look at the timing of why the state government has come out with that strategy at this point in time. And essentially, its expression of interest is saying internationally, who wants to come and invest in South Australia to capitalise on the resources that exist in South Australia, both the mineral resources, in particular of magnetite, and the renewable resources being the wind and solar that we've got in our patch. It is quite clear that there is an abundance of resources in the state that are currently not being fully utilised, and the state government's expression of interest in calling for EOI's is to look at other companies who may be interested in investing in our state to unlock some of those resources. In the discussions, it is quite clear that the missing piece of the puzzle in this state at present is the DRI plant. I don't know with certainty, but I understand that that equipment is probably something in the order of one to two billion dollars' worth of investment. So, it's a significant amount of infrastructure that's required. Clearly, the state government doesn't want to put money into that type of investment, it's looking for the private sector to respond. GFG Alliance has talked in the past about the importance of having a DRI plant to be able to feed green iron feedstock into the electric art furnace for its green steel transition, but at this point in time, it hasn't got the finance to do that investment. So, I'll let you do your own speculation in terms of what the state government's motivations are, and in terms of the green steel opportunity. Back to the Hydrogen Conference, the other, the key message that was well received by the attendees that I presented on behalf of the Spencer Gulf Cities was around the need for the social planning and the social infrastructure to support the capital investment that has been foreshadowed. And I can confirm that it was well received, given the number of people that actually came and spoke to me after the presentation, and were quite relieved instead of talking about the theoretical application of hydrogen and the research work that's been done in terms of hydrogen, the very real, on-the-ground opportunity and challenges that locations like Waila and the broader Spencer Gulf region need to address in order to fully unlock that economic prosperity for our state and the nation. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, CEO. Councillor Border.
Can I ask a quick question, and it's in relation to the Boden, which was a really interesting video. Right at the end, she broke down five key items to de-risk the investment. I'm just interested in your perspective. The first one was the commercial side of it, which was long-term customer contracts, and I just wonder what state that is in currently? Because like you mentioned, there's all this, there's a lot of discussion about it. Oftake agreements has been mentioned. In your opinion, where do you think things are at for that first key point that the Boden Street example is saying, look, here's a look into the future? Long-term customer contracts is the first cab off the rank?
Yeah, so the main commercial contracts that need to be put in place is for green ore internationally. So, obviously, domestically, given that GFG Alliance already has access to the magnetite resource through Islamic mining, and they've already got the Liberty One Steel for the steelmaking, they've already got the foothold in terms of being able to utilise the green or the iron ore through DRI, is being able to take the raw iron ore product and remove some of the impurities using wind or solar power to actually produce a value-added iron ore feedstock that can go straight into an electric art furnace. So, in terms of an offtake agreement, there's not a need for an offtake agreement domestically, given that GFG Alliance already have that foothold. In terms of the commercial opportunity for either green steel or green ore, we then talk about either other domestic uses of the iron ore in its raw form, which could be through the state government's green steel green ore EOI, there could be other, I'm just going to use the term players instead of talking about companies or consortias, it's just easier. There could be other players that may be interested in investing in and setting up operations in South Australia, actually accessing some of that magnetite resource, or potentially some of the green iron resource for alternate purposes. It's unlikely that we'll get another steelworks built, albeit you should never say never, particularly when you look at what H2 Green Steel are doing. The other thing, just to add to that, is that in that presentation, they expressly say that they're looking at, they're doing similar type of investment in three or four other jurisdictions around the globe, and that's where they reference Australia as a keen interest. So, you could have other players come in to either want to mine the magnetite resource, or get, or provide the DRI facility to value-add the iron ore resource for use either by Liberty One Steel, or for exporting green iron ore globally as a feedstock into steelmaking in other countries and other jurisdictions. In relation to that item, there would be a huge demand for that product, given that it doesn't exist at scale at present. And because we've got the ingredients here, we're well-placed to be able to provide that to overseas countries. The state government has had some discussions with various jurisdictions, like the port of Rotterdam, in terms of being able to export that product into other countries. However, the state government doesn't own the resource, which is the green iron ore. So, that, the ability to commercialise and contract for supply of green ore, you've got to be able to produce it in the first instance, and GFG Alliance is not in the position at this point in time to produce it at scale for that purpose. They can mine the iron ore, as they've been doing for some time, and export the unimproved iron ore. As Minister Coos and Tonas said at the Hydrogen Conference, I think it was either hydrogen or the green ore, because they're all back-to-back, he said, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to dig up our iron ore and put on a ship to send overseas, and to convert our wind and solar into the form of hydrogen to put on a ship and send overseas, for then someone to put the two together and benefit. And beneficiaries the iron ore um for the purpose of putting into a um into still making overseas. It makes more sense to do that locally here, and um I think there clearly has been a shift. Um over the last couple of years in terms of the economics around exporting hydrogen. Either in a gas or in the form of ammonia, and I think there is now a prevailing view that. The more that you can use the hydrogen locally and value adds, for example, in terms of green ore. Um then you export the green ore at a much higher price than what you would uh export the 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 raw commodity. So um in terms of commercializing, that hasn't occurred yet because it hasn't yet. Um got to the point where uh I think there's confidence that those contracts could be met with a future supply of green ore.
Thank you, C E O. Last final opportunity, anybody has a question for the C E O? Otherwise, you have a recommendation moved and seconded. I'll put that recommendation. Those in favor? Against? Carry. Thank you. Item fourteen point one point three, South Australia's Green Iron Opportunity. I'll take the report as read. Any questions to the C E O? Councillor Boarder?
Just moving.
Move councillor Boarder, do I have a second? Councillor Todd? I'll put the motion, those in favor? Against? Carry. Thank you. Item fourteen point one point four, the Hilt CRC. De-risking carbonization for heavy industry presentation. We'll take that as read. Does anybody have any questions of the C E O? In that case, could I call for a mover of the recommendation? Move councillor Westerman, seconded councillor Todd. I'll put the motion, those in favor? Against? Carry. Thank you. Fourteen point one point five, the Local Government Association Annual General Meeting Call for Proposed Items of Business. Take the report as read. Anybody has any questions or comments of the C E O? If there are no questions or comments, we do have a recommendation there for the record. Would somebody care to move that recommendation? Move councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Campbell. I'll put the motion, those in favor? Against? Carry. Thank you. Item fourteen point two, Corporate Services Ordinary Reports, fourteen point two point one. Certification of the twenty twenty-three twenty-four financial statements. We have a report, C E O, you wish to have it addressed or taken as read at this stage?
This one's just a quirk of the love of local government, actually have to ask time.
Councillor Campbell?
Sorry?
Oh. Right. In that case, would somebody care to move the recommendation? Councillor, move councillor Clopica, seconded councillor Boarder. I'll put the motion, those in favor? Against? Carry. Thank you. Item fourteen point two point two, the monthly budget report for June twenty twenty-four. Do we have any questions which I can direct to our finance manager or C E O?
Um I will just note, it is written in the report, but obviously um it's not our finalized June position, so it's what we were. As at thirtieth of June, um we've got year-end final invoices, processing journals, um all those sorts of things, so. It's just a um where we were at as at thirtieth of June, but it will change before we adopt the financial statements um in October.
Thank you. In that case, uh councillor Simpson, you'll move?
This is not a comment, not a question. It's interesting to see how outstanding rates are down to the lowest level I've seen for a long time, which is great. You know, to have not in beyond.
Thank you, councillor. In that case, if there's no further questions, will somebody care to move the recommendation? Move councillor Boarder, do I have a second, please? Move ca- uh seconded councillor Todd? I'll put the motion, those in favor? Against? Carry. Thank you. Item fourteen point two point three, request for additional infrastructure Malquana, Malquana Road. Orshu Road and Lincoln Highway. We have a report. Does anybody have any questions to be directed to the appropriate officers? Councillor Boarder?
Not really a question, just an acknowledgement of um of gratitude for going through that process. And it's it's really interesting to see what seems to be a simple thing in some people's minds, and certainly it came across to me initially. This is what we could probably be able to do, but to see that level of detail was um. Uh it's not the result that the community member wants, but it's it's really interesting to see the mechanics of what works behind the scenes there. Um the recommendation being that we don't progress with installing additional infrastructure, I wonder if we can proactively try and find another. Alternate. Um there's obviously a business that's invested heavily in that location, hopefully that they knew for well what they were getting into. But that would be my only comment, is what could we do to try and help what they're pointing towards? And I don't have the answer, but I just wanted to make that comment as well, and and with gratitude for the report that was provided.
Yeah, thank you, councillor. Yes, I don't know the answer to your question either. Any further questions or comments? Otherwise, do I have a mover? Councillor Simpson?
Moved.
Move. Councillor Westerman seconded. I'll put the motion, those in favor? Against? Carry. Thank you. Fourteen point two point four, the quarterly report procurement. I'll take the report as read. Take on board any questions or comments. Councillor Simpson?
One small comment on page one seventy-seven where we say that. Um it was to do with supervision and training of a employee. Which I thought was a bit average. I haven't got the page up. If you'd like to look at it, they're talking about somebody who did a job. Without, I think, the correct supervision and probably overspent.
I'm happy to provide. Um yes, so what we've added to the report for the first time is, we've always had um. Uh showing exemptions where our C E O or director has signed off on not um approaching um the number of. Um supplies that is given within our um policy, so you know, obviously when we, uh over two hundred and fifty thousand, for instance, we would normally go to tender. If we didn't go to tender, the C E O would have to sign off on that. We would report that to council. What we have added to this report, just as an extra layer of transparency, is if there's ever um a. Not necessarily a, an exemption where we don't go out to the market at all, but the ones where. Maybe you started the process and you thought you needed to do X process, and then the price came in a bit different and you did a, you did Y process. You ended up, you should have done Y process, but it didn't make sense to sort of start again. Or any other quirks or things that um may have happened out of the normal process. So what happened with this one, what we've reported there is, it's not that we didn't, I don't think, gain proper value of our procurement process. It was just about documentation. So someone had gone and done X, um they were fairly new at council, they'd come from private industry. And were probably used to um doing things like differently. They still went out and did the, like, got quotes and they've um. But it was just how they approached the market and how they recorded the quotes as they were coming in. So I don't think it actually affected councils um. Uh value for money that they got out of that procurement. Obviously, that was a learning process for that person. So this is, you know, being transparent, showing that um that happened, it's recorded, and that we've taken steps to ensure that doesn't happen again.
Yeah, I appreciate it was not always been, I just thought it was a bit poor that we had a newish employee. We didn't get proper supervision on that particular job.
Yep, acknowledged. And 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 as noted there, that position probably, it might have been a bit of a gap in the system where that position hasn't done those sorts of procurements before. There was a bit of, you know, trying to get some more um. Some more um uh experience throughout the organization of procurement, and that was probably the gap that was there because they hadn't done that. That position hadn't done those sorts of procurements before. Um they probably hadn't had the initial training on that process that that they were using.
And then again, the compliment to the fact that we're spending more on wild-based businesses than we are on. Others, which is great.
Thank you, councillor. Any further questions or comments? Otherwise, we have a recommendation. Could I call for a mover, please? Move councillor Boarder, seconded councillor Campbell. I'll put the motion, those in favor? Against? Carry. Thank you. Item fourteen point three, City Growth Ordinary Reports. Fourteen point three point one, the Australia Day Events. We have recommendations. You will have read the report. Does anybody have any questions or comments? If there are no questions or comments, councillor Boarder?
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, um but I'd like to speak about the motion. Do I wait for it to be voted on, or do I do that before? So I've got some comments to make about it.
Yes.
Yeah.
If I call for a mover and a second, then you speak on it before we put it to the vote.
Okay.
Yes. Would somebody care to move the report? Councillor Simpson?
To expedite the matter, I'll move it.
Does somebody care to second it? Councillor Todd seconded. Now, questions or comments? Yes.
Sure, so I've I've prepared this because I know that it's a challenging topic to talk about. So I'm just gonna read it and 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 I say this with respect. So the stated intent behind the motion. Is to be a council who respects First Nations culture and values. And acknowledges the twenty-sixth of January is a day of mourning for many First Nations people. I acknowledge and respect both of these intents. And what I'm about to say comes from a place of love and respect for all people loving and wanting to live in Australia. The citizenship ceremony by definition, First Nations people are not becoming citizens. In my view, this ceremony doesn't affect First Nations people directly at all, and changing the date of this ceremony. Shows no extra respect to First Nation's culture. And also note that the code states, the federal government's code, states that conferees. Are the most important people at the ceremony, and the focus of attention should be on them. And I query what message we are sending to new citizens when we are not welcoming them on the day designated to celebrate. The country they are joining. I believe we are sending new Australians, if we were to choose to go with this motion. And shift the date of the citizenship ceremony to a date other than the twenty-sixth. I believe we're sending a new Australians a confusing message, which doesn't make sense to me. In regards to the Australia Day Awards Ceremony and the shifting of that date, I cannot see how changing the date of the presentation of these awards. Again, shows any additional respect to First Nations culture and values. Or acknowledges the twenty-sixth of a day of mourning when we are still proceeding or suggested to proceed with a four-hour event full of fun festivities and celebrations. If a First Nations person who sees Australia Day as a day of mourning, why would they want to receive an Australia Day award in the first place? In the event that they still do, just not on the twenty-sixth of January. Then I propose that we make an alternate day of receipt for that award available on a case-by-case basis. Why would we make other award recipients miss out on receiving their Australia Day award on Australia Day? For reasons that, again, don't make sense to me, based on the intent of the motion. I also note that in this year's twenty twenty-four Australia Day Awards Ceremony, it was not attended by multiple award recipients. I believe we should have the awards on the main stage as part of a larger event, as something to be celebrated by the whole community. It would raise the profile of the award and may bring forward more nominations for future years and build a community culture we can all be proud of together. So in summary, if we are trying to take action to respect First Nations culture and values and acknowledge the twenty-sixth of January as a day of mourning. Then I feel we should either move the whole lot or don't move anything. Moving half of it seems to me to lack any authenticity to achieve the intent of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Campbell?
Am I able to be heard also? I think um that um I'm I'm replying all cut uh to what's been said. If we're going to, and I I speak um on this as a Caucasian person with no Aboriginal heritage at all. I think if this is something that we're going to discuss as far as Australia Day goes, that we invite um an elder. Or someone from the Aboriginal community to actually address us and give us some education on why it's a day of mourning. And once we have that, perhaps we should reassess then.
Thank you, councillor. Any further questions or comments? Councillor Simpson?
In view of councillor Boarder's conversation, am I able to withdraw my nominate my proposal? I will proceed to that.
Well, the second to be happy for the mover to withdraw.
So I was just gonna say the same thing. And also, I've got another comment to make. That's, so my comments are kind of in response to what you've just said. Um I believe most people know why Australians, First Nation Australians see it as a day of mourning. And I think it inviting a single person to come along and discuss it is fraught with um danger. Because every Aboriginal person's got a different view on it. So I I don't believe that you could ask a person to come along and tell them why they thought it should be moved or not moved. Because of the Aboriginal people that I know and the people in the community that I speak to, there's quite a vast range of opinions on that, on the subject. So.
Thank you, councillor. Have any further comments or questions? Councillor English?
I'd just like to say I think Peter summed it up perfectly, and I hear what Sharon and councillor Todd and Campbell said, but. And I agree with what Peter said and what Sharon said as well, so. I think it's pretty balanced.
It's a question, who's where to from here, because though you, presumably the recommendations, the motion has been withdrawn. I was going to seek advice from the C E O.
Yep, um sorry, through through the mayor. Um once the motion is on the table. It can not be withdrawn. The advice would be that if the mover and second are no longer wish to proceed. With the recommendation as presented, they can vote against the recommendation. But you just can't simply take something off the table that's on the table to be dealt with. Um the only other way of potentially dealing with it would be for someone else to move a formal motion that the item be adjourned. Subject to X, 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 whatever the um subject to is. But um given that everyone has spoken other than councillor Westerman and councillor Coblicar. They're the only two people that would be able to move a formal motion at this point in time.
Is it possible for councillor Boarder to raise an amendment? Against that motion?
Um through the chair, what councillor Boarder um said was not presented in the, number one, in the form of amendments. Number two, councillor Boarder has already spoken to the matter, and it would be up to the discretion of the chair and the meeting whether councillor Boarder was able to speak again. And number three, what um councillor Boarder put forward would not be deemed to be an amendment. Because it was uh directly um at odds with what um the recommendation and what is on the table.
Councillor Campbell?
Seek leave of the chair to speak a second time on the matter?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Um may I put a motion forward for an amendment?
Yes, yes.
Okay, on the spot. Um I put forward the emotion that the matter be adjourned to a further date to be decided. So that the council may discuss further the sensitive matter and also seek a report. From other councils in the state, like a consensus of what they intend to do also.
Thank you, councillor. Would somebody care to move that?
Perhaps that's be worded better though.
If I can say to me, I don't think I care what other councillors does.
I don't care.
I think I care what we do, not the councillors.
Sorry. So councillor Campbell moves a formal motion unless she gets new grounds, leave the meeting, and gets the majority to support her making a formal motion, even though she's already spoken to the honour. Secondly, with what she's phrasing in the form of amendment, that's essential in a German that's requesting more information, some of which will not actually be able to be done. So she's suggesting that we could get a consensus opinion on what other councillors are doing. And as you're aware, this is, the citizenship component is determined by the government process. It's only whether cities are doing the community events on Australia Day. And the question is, what additional information would council want to make a formal decision on whether you should proceed with it? So that's something that you could do, so it's probably better to have this. Have a vote down, and then we have to work out what does it do to. So question. Which is what of councillor Koblukar, who hasn't spoken? Yeah, yeah. Do you want me to talk to them?
Right, we've had a discussion there. CEO is going to have a few words to work out the way forward.
Okay, through, through the chair. Councillor Campbell has already spoken to the item. And when you have the opportunity to speak a second time, essentially what you seek to do was move what we call a formal motion, which is a motion of deferral. The only two councillors that can move a formal motion at this point in time are the councillors who have not spoken to this item, being councillor Koblukar and councillor Westerman. If council proceeds with putting this matter to a vote and this item being lost at this point in time, it does limit how council might return to this item and revisit this item at a later stage. So the advice from the administration would be that probably the best way to deal with this item at this point in time would be for councillor Westerman or councillor Koblukar to move a formal motion to defer this item for a future meeting and to undertake community consultation and further discussion prior to that meeting date. I'm happy to respond to any questions that councillors might have in terms of that clarification.
Sorry, or if that's not the will of the council, the mayor will put the current motion before the members to a vote, and the vote from around the chamber will be the position that is taken by the council.
Councillor Koblukar?
Just to clarify, can I put in a motion to withdraw recommendation? Withdraw the recommendation?
No, that's not a formal motion that can be taken.
Yeah. Sorry, just for clarification, under the Local Government Act, a formal motion, it's prescribed in terms of what a formal motion can do. One of the formal motions can be to adjourn the item, subject to or for the purpose of, for example. Another formal motion is to, you know, put, put the matter to the vote. And there's a couple of others, but unfortunately the Local Government Act doesn't allow a formal motion to withdraw a matter that's already on the table.
Thank you, CEO. Councillor Boarder?
Could the, either councillor Westman or councillor Koblukar, if they wanted to, amend the existing motion? To reflect, I guess, if it's, if it's the will of the council, and I'm just thinking from the perspective that I've presented on, to cross out number two, and as number three, affirms the Australia Community Celebrations and citizenship ceremony and Citizen of the Year awards will continue to be held on the Australia Day, the twenty sixth of January. Is that possible? And then I guess the question is, is that the will of the council?
That is possible.
That is possible.
And just confirming, I can't do that because I've already spoken?
Correct.
Councillor Koblukar? Right.
So, so just to be clear, so unless councillor Koblukar or councillor Westerman move a formal motion at this point in time, you have a motion on the table that must be dealt with. Actually, the other item, other formal motion is that it could be to lay the matter on the table. That is actually another one, which means that you're not making a decision at this point in time, and that this item then can be lifted another time, at another stage, so that could potentially work.
If I can, just through the mayor, in looking at the different types of formal motions that I have in front of me, there are, as the CEO mentioned, there are four, there are five formal motions that could be passed. One is that the meeting proceed to the next item of business. The next is that the question be put, the next be that the question lie on the table, the next be that the question be adjourned, or that the meeting be adjourned. So your options are, in terms of this particular matter, you could pass a formal motion that the meeting proceed to the next item of business, and that then leaves this motion not being dealt with at all. Or it could be that the question be put, and that would mean that the mayor would need to move to the vote on this particular item immediately as soon as that formal motion was put. Thirdly, the question lie on the table. That means that it would, again, stay unanswered and be kept on the agenda. You'll recall that item on the agenda that's at the beginning of our agenda, which says matters adjourned or lying on the table, that has to be present at each meeting until such time as a council member brings it back on to the table for discussion. So that's what the effect of a matter lying on the table would be. Or that the question be adjourned, that means that this particular item be adjourned, or that the meeting itself be adjourned.
I'll ask a question as.
Yes, councillor Campbell.
Not related to this, but as to process. So if it's laid on the table, does that mean it just sits there until at another meeting we call it on?
Correct.
So, yeah, thank you.
Councillor Todd?
So my question is an extension of that. That's what I was going to ask. So if councillor Koblukar or councillor Westman was prepared to move that the item be laid on the table, we could come back at the next meeting or whenever, and then it would be open for voting and things again? Someone could then, is that correct? Someone could then propose a motion? If, a, a, you know, recommend a, a change to it or something like that?
So from a meeting, and this is a really good example in terms of working through meeting procedures. So at this point in time, in this debate, we have had councillors Simpson, Inglis, Boarder, Campbell and Todd speak either for or against this motion, or, or speak towards this motion. That means that none of you as council members could move an amendment to this motion at all, or speak again to this motion unless the leave of the meeting is actually provided to you to speak a second time to this motion. Unless it is the mover who has got a right of response to the conversation at the end of debate. Councillors Koblukar and Westman have not yet spoken in this debate, so they could move an amendment. Any member, and this is my bad, I advised incorrectly, any member from around this table could move a formal motion straight away. And as soon as that formal motion is moved, if a seconder is achieved, there is no debate and that needs to be put to the vote immediately. Make sense?
I'm confused now. Sorry.
If I can, just before supplementary questions in terms of process, just one question. So any, anyone who's already spoken to the motion can move a formal motion?
Correct.
All right, I wasn't aware of that. But secondly, the difference between something laying on the table and something being adjourned for the purpose of, for example, additional information coming back, adding to what Cathy said, if the matter is left laying on the table, there is no extra information that will be provided. And the only councillors who can progress the conversation are the ones that haven't spoken. That's if it lays on the table. If you want more information or you want the administration to do something to assist your decision making, then it is better to adjourn the item with a request for, for example, additional information or community consultation, or whatever it is that you need to help you inform your decision in terms of how to deal with this matter that's on the table. So that's the difference between laying on the table and an adjournment, you know, with the opportunity to do something extra than what's before you tonight. Well, actually, Cap, sorry, the Director of Corporate Services has just confirmed that any member, I, I had in my head that any member who hadn't spoken could make a formal motion.
Any member can raise a formal motion at any point in time during the debate.
Okay.
May we return to my formal motion?
Which case I'd like to move, when you're finished?
So I started a formal motion earlier. I was told I couldn't. Are we able to continue with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
If it's framed as a formal motion, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I asked for a formal motion, or put forward a formal motion to, for this matter to be adjourned for a further meeting, to undertake community consultation and provide a further report with additional information.
Thank you, councillor. We have a formal motion there. Would somebody care to second it? Councillor Todd? Have a mover and a seconder with formal motion? I will put that motion. Those in favour? Those against? The motion is lost. I will still have the recommendation. Move councillor Simpson? Sorry? Oh, councillor Boarder, sorry.
So just in the process of the meeting, can I now ask the leave of the meeting to make a motion as councillor Campbell has? Through, through the mayor?
Yes.
Can I say leave to make a formal motion?
Just need two thirds.
Yes.
Yep. So my formal motion would be that.
Hang on. So you need to first accept whether you're prepared to give the opportunity to speak a second time, and then just get two thirds, majority, that they are happy for councillor Boarder to speak a second time?
Yeah.
With the aim of trying to progress this matter, I am quite prepared for you to speak, maybe to speak a second time. For that to occur, I do need two thirds of the elected members to support that.
This is a formal motion that he's proposing.
This is just to speak?
Yeah.
He's actually, if it's very clear that he's moving a formal motion. He can grant his, the second formal.
All right. So are you speaking or doing a formal motion?
I want to make a motion that we can vote on, yea or nay.
So that is a, a formal motion, that the motion be put?
Yes.
So, so you are moving that the motion be put, you need a seconder to get the, the motion be put, and then the mayor will be required to put the motion to the vote?
Now, this is the motion that I'm going to create now?
Correct.
Yeah, yes.
No.
No, sorry. No, no, you, you can't create another motion. The motion that is before the council are the three motions that are before you on the screen. If you wish to move a formal motion, that that motion be put to the vote, you need to move now to the mayor. I move that this motion be put. Full stop, and then the mayor will look for a seconder to that. And if it is seconded, the mayor is required then to put that motion to the floor to be voted upon.
Okay. And at risk of not wanting to complicate it, I have no opportunity to make a new motion or amend the existing motion?
No, because you have already spoken, you cannot move an amendment to this motion.
Okay.
And just to be clear, if you want to move a formal motion, which is for the matter to lay on the table to be adjourned, subject to X, Y and Z, to move to the next item of business, you can move a formal motion of that nature, but you can't move something in terms of an amendment to what's already on the table.
Can I just do the one where it gets put and we vote? What do I need to say to make that happen?
You say, I move the formal motion, that the motion be put.
I move the formal motion, that that motion be put.
Have a motion from councillor Boarder, that the motion be put. Does he have a seconder? Councillor Simpson, you second him?
Right.
I will put that motion. Those in favour? That the motion be put? The motion. Those against? Motion is lost.
Yeah. Sorry, ma'am, you were close. You were close.
Close.
The formal motion has to be voted on first, which is that everything stops and a vote is taken on what's on the screen. So the first vote is whether you want to vote now or you want further discussion.
My apologies.
That's why you're close. Yeah.
Are that much?
Sorry, close. So, so on a formal motion, which is to put the matter, you need to do the vote.
I can, sorry, in.
Yeah, that's all right. And this is the first time we've had this, so we'll work through it. So we've now got, through the mayor, through the mayor, we've got a formal motion that has been moved and seconded. The mayor has to put that motion to the council for a vote straight away. And that motion is that debate ceases and a decision is made in relation to the substantive motion that's on the table. So the first time you vote, it's in relation to the formal motion, which is to vote or not to vote at this point in time. So the mayor will first say, who's in favour of the formal motion? If that gets up, then immediately the mayor will go to the substantive motion on the table and will put that motion as it is to the vote immediately. If on the first call for votes, councillors, some councillors want further discussion or they want to do something other than make a decision, they would vote against the formal motion. Everyone who just wants to get to the substantive motion would support the formal motion. Is that clear? That's correct. That's correct. Yep. So it's two, two separate, two separate things that you, we'll be voting on. Yep, so it's two two separate, two separate things that you put um will be voting on.
Can I, sorry, also just before we move on, and we already have a mover and a seconder for that substantive motion of councillors Simpson and Todd. And so that wasn't quite on the screen, so we can't see it. It's probably useful, fabulous. That's great. And so um once the formal motion has been voted upon, then we move back to that one that councillor Simpson and Todd moved and seconded.
Right. We have the moving of the formal motion that the motion be put. Those in favour? Against? Carried.
On on a on a formal motion.
Um I would like to call a division.
That's all right. So that's on the formal motion.
That's on the formal motion.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Those that voted in favour? And see ya. Thank you, please see them. And those against? Thank you. Just to going to declare that was carried? Yeah, yeah. Now we will proceed to the original motion without any further debate. Do I, uh we've got the mover and seconder. I put the motion, those in favour? Against? The motion is lost. Moving on. Item fourteen point three point two, Regional Childcare Desert Advocacy Project. Take the report as read. There are a range of recommendations there. Before calling for a mover or a second, is any, oh no, I should call for a mover and a second first. Somebody care to move? Councillor Todd, seconded councillor Westerman. I have any questions or comments to direct to the CEO? No questions or comments. We have a motion moved and seconded. I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against? Carried. Thank you. Item fourteen point four, City Infrastructure Ordinary Reports. We have nil. Item fifteen, Information Decision Reports, fifteen point one, council members. Fifteen point one point one, the mayor's list of engagements. Just to add to a couple of comments there, please. Uh you will in due course receive a report from me regarding the Canberra trip. So that's in hand, you will get that. Uh obviously, I have not attended the Audit and Risk Committee meeting today, seeing it was deferred. Also, a couple of other things to add that have come up since uh that was pre-prepared on Thursday. Uh range of other media. On Friday, I did an ABC statewide interview with Norel Graham regarding the wonderful things happening out with our cuttlefish and the dive site and all the work that we did to upgrade it. Today, I did an ABC Adelaide interview to do with the airport. Tomorrow morning at an ungodly hour of seven o'clock, ten past seven. Just as well it's radio, not television. I will be doing an ABC North and West uh interview also on the airport. And this Friday, I will be doing an interview with Five Double A in the afternoon regarding all things Cuttle Fest and Cuttlefish. Now, if there are no further questions, we have a recommend uh recommendation. Would somebody care to move that you receive a note the mayor's activities? Uh looks like move councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Border. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Fifteen point two, City Infrastructure, fifteen point two point one, the monthly information report, very detailed report there. I'll certainly take it as read. Before I give you the opportunity to ask questions, would somebody care to move the report? Move councillor Westerman, seconded councillor Border. Any questions or comments? That I can direct to the CEO, who can then redirect them. Councillor Simpson.
Sorry, councillor.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. We mentioned the fact we have seven unsightly vacant properties. We don't mention anything to do with vacant, with occupied properties that are in disrepair. Do we do, do we do, have we got any action in place for them?
And.
Oh, no, sorry. Adding that, we had an address in Brook Street, which we acted upon. They've had a letter, but that was back in February. And the place is no no different to what it was then.
And I'll take it on notice in terms of the property uh that you've referenced. Uh but certainly the actions that we are taking are on um uh unsightly properties, both occupied and unoccupied. So the information which is in this report is in relation to those unoccupied. But certainly as part of the city amenities project, we are looking at both occupied and unoccupied unsightly properties as to the processes that we are using.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Border. Shopping trolleys, um do we put fines to the supermarket if it's still an issue? Just the note, the notice here that we're in discussions with the supermarkets and that they use utilized contractors. If that's still not satisfactory and the community is still upset about it, do we need to make a point and push the button to issue infringement notices or fines to the supermarkets? Are we at that point yet?
Uh we're not at that point yet, but uh as councillors are aware, there has been legislative changes which actually provide additional powers in that space. Um we are, again, as part of the city amenity project, that's one of the program activities that we will be doing is um having stronger relationships with various parties, particularly in the central precinct there with Westlands. And also, uh I know you've referenced shopping trolleys, but uh we're talking uh to each of these parties around stewardship of their products, including shopping trolleys, including litter and waste that comes from the far uh fast food outlets, et cetera, et cetera. So um yes, that's part of the city amenity program. And yes, uh should we um consider it's appropriate in terms of moving towards expiation? That is one of the considerations.
Thank you, councillor. Any further questions? I would certainly like to thank all those responsible for that report. So very exhaustive. Would somebody care to move the recommendation? Move councillor Border? I knew that.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion there. Uh I'll put, put the motion, those in favour? Against, carried. Thank you. Item fifteen point two, City Infrastructure, fifteen point two point one, the monthly info, uh just done that. Item sixteen, notices of motion, we have nil. Item seventeen, questions on notice, we have nil. Item eighteen, questions without notice. Do we have any questions without notice? Councillor Inglis.
I do. Um I've been advised that uh at a point lately, there's a a potential um shack owner out there who's using a private car park as an entry and access point to their property. And there's been a lot of dwellings turn up in this place and there are whispers that they're running as a B and B. And they've changed some of the fence line at a different angle. So it's just been mentioned to me by one of the shack owners that, you know, how can part of the car park be turned into an entry and access point for a shack? But and I just want to know what the status of that at and where we're at with that.
And I can respond to that one.
Oh.
And there are two elements to that, that uh councils um regulatory services staff have looked at that car park in the context of changes to infrastructure that have been made to council infrastructure that has been made. And so in the context of councils' bylaws, where there's any interference with councils' infrastructure uh that can be expiated. Secondly, there uh we are aware there is a planning application in in terms of uh Airbnb uh of that particular premises. And so uh regulatory services staff are working together with development staff in terms of ensuring that there is uh an appropriate outcome uh in terms of the way that that car park has been treated at this point.
Yeah, that'd be good because um it's not a very big car park anyhow, and it does get used. So I can see the time's going to come, somebody's going to park on these people, they're going to get in and out and it's going to be on for young adults. And they shouldn't be using it as access and negress to the property anyhow because they're going to do that, the rest, all the other shack is out the most of going, annex whatever land they want.
Thank you for that, councillor. Councillor Kobblica.
Thank you, mayor. Excuse me. Um just a a question regarding the lights on Hummock Hill. Um I'm aware that um the company that originally supplied them no longer exists. Um it does look pretty terrible up there, um half monotworking or broken. Um what are what are we doing about rectifying that?
Um I'll take that one on notice for additional information. Uh we have, I am aware, we have actually investigated um those lights and in terms of replacement of those lights. And and as you're aware, the company who uh installed them is no longer there. Um we will need to have a look at what the solution is for lighting up Hummock Hill, including what is the um uh the financial impact in terms of uh restoration.
I have another question. Um just in terms of um dogs off leads at the beach. Had a a few rate payers or whatever kind of quiz me about this. Um certainly believe that um some people are flaunting the rules. Um I'd just be keen to find out how many expiation notices we issued last year um for dogs off leads at the beach.
Uh thank you for that question. I will take that one on notice. Um uh we did have a um a random inspection program occur over a period of three or four months in the context of dogs off leash um complying with the on-lead, off-lead um requirements down at the foreshore. Uh I am aware that only one expiation notice was actually issued during that random period of about three months um where we had an officer go down there uh very regularly at different times to uh see uh the degrees of compliance. Uh and as I said, there was only one occasion. Uh but I will take that uh on notice in terms of looking at the broader timeframe. Um if I can just go back to your previous question as well. Um I have just been advised that there is budget in the uh in the budget this year in terms of lighting on Hummock Hill, so we'll start looking at that.
Thank you. Any further questions without notice? Otherwise, item nineteen, motions without notice. Any motions without notice? Thank you. No motions without notice. At that juncture, I would call for a mover and a seconder for an adjournment or perhaps fifteen minutes. Move councillor Inglis, seconded everybody. Uh councillor Kobblica. Uh then we resume in confidential. I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against? Carried. Thank you. That means we resume at ten minutes past seven. Would somebody care to move and second that we reconvene in the meeting? Move councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Campbell. I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against? Carried. Item twenty, consideration of confidential items, twenty point one, corporate services. So we're going into confidentiality. Would somebody care to move that we go into confidence for item twenty point one? Corporate services, twenty point one point one, unsolicited proposal, Marina Land. We have a motion from councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Inglis. I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against? Carried. Thank you.